All right. This closes the order of the Monday, July 29th Planning Commission meeting. Before getting started, we want to introduce our newest Planning Commission member, Drew Canning. So, welcome to the team.
Hello. Thank you.
First official item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the meeting held on June 24th, 2024. Are there, is there any comments or discussion?
I'd make a motion, we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, motion passes. Next item of business is item two, old business, there is none. Moving on, item three, new business, item A, site plan review for 5755 Windsor Drive, Fairway, Kansas, as submitted by Robert Wielding, property owner, request exception for fence location on a corner lot. Basel, will you please provide your staff report?
Yes, I'll let the report stand as submitted and staff does recommend is not opposed to the requested application. Basically, it's two exceptions, side street and then did some calculation and it's basically 11 feet from the curb where they wanted to install the fence.
Just, both of us?
Sorry, can I, can I, can I show you guys the, the, the?
Yeah, just a second. Okay. Do we have any questions for staff?
So, is, is the new fence, is that the dark black line that runs around? Back up to the front of the?
That is correct.
And then it goes across the front also?
No, it's not a, of the front.
It stops at the edge.
Okay, so it stops at?
It stops at the corner.
So, but it's 23 feet from the curb, right, and 11 from the property line? So, if you go by the house right now, the property line staked out and it's about 11 feet from the curb.
Yes, so it needs to be 12 feet from the property line and right now, the way it's set up, it's 11.
Okay.
So, that's another exception.
How do you feel about that?
I don't have a problem with it.
There are two?
There's little side issues, they're using a rod iron fence.
Yeah, that was another question, that's, that's what they're calling the montage majestic?
There are two large trees there as well, so the 11 foot helps clear that. Well, I guess it would be further away, never mind, I misspoke.
So, I have all your proposal, it's actually 34 feet from the curb, so I think it obvious that, that areas.
Okay, any further questions for staff? Okay, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Basically, gentlemen, my name's Robert Wiley, address 5755 Windsor Drive, Kansas. So, I have a, actually printed out for you guys, updated proposal with EMS pictures as well as pictures from the site. Third or fourth picture is a satellite image of a prior fence that was there on November 17th. We seek to follow the same line of the prior fence.
So, the property line right now is marked with those stakes?
Correct.
So, is it? 34 feet off of that line?
Should be 34 feet off that line.
So, the red line is your new proposal?
Correct.
Wow.
So, should we go on to side issues, we preserve the side law.
And this is your preferred solution?
It's actually a preferred.
So?
It needs a nice and easy curve line.
Do they even need to come before us with a?
I think the question was a variance.
Actually, staff does not have the new proposal, so I'm, I'm not sure if you've said anything right now.
Well, I think the question was a variance of the adjacent property because the upfront-facing adjacent property sits behind our property in the cul-de-sac and has created the initial variance and that's why I was asked to present.
You probably found out how much they run our fence cost.
(laughing). Because at this point, the side setback is met for the corner lot.
That is correct, but it's still, they still need an extension for the location.
Which, which part of the location?
Back.
It's due to the adjacent home.
Okay.
It's both, yeah.
So, they're still approaching in front of the adjacent home.
The variance request is that the adjacent home sits further back due to it sitting on cul-de-sac, so it's not a traditional corner lot.
Is there no, since it's going in place, is the previous fence, was it just removed recently?
It was removed in 2017.
Oh, okay. Never mind. Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Thoughts?
I would be in support of granting the exception.
Same with me.
Well, they're not in the encroaching on the front of the adjacent house, sounds like the setback is no longer required.
I think that, is that driveway, tree lined?
This one here? Which one are you talking about?
Yeah, that driveway.
The neighbor's driveway? I think on this part it is, but.
So, although we're just seeing this the first time, I mean, the question that we still have to discuss is the question that was before us originally is the back property line. So, that's not new. The only new part is that it's not extending as far to the road as it did before. So, there's?
What, 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 the back setback, looks like it's on the property line, what technically does, how does the code read, say?
The back, I mean, there's no issue, you can put it on the property line.
Gotcha.
And with this new proposal, basically, the 11, the 12 feet is taken care of, so the only exception is number one, which is in front of the building, the adjacent property built in line.
So, does the code say that it can't, that it can extend up to the plotted setback or the setback of the house is built there? Because isn't, isn't that house built back farther than?
So, the code states is three times the setback, so measured from the curb. So, technically, and I think we've, we've been through this multiple times, your fence in some scenarios, you can have the property, the building, and the fence has to be cutting into half of the backyard and we've yet to correct that, I mean. But we've, we're getting the applications and you guys are not moving in and addressing it, so. But that's the scenario we have where the code regarding the fence is the most restrictive or the higher of the two, which is three times the setback scenario. So, that puts it, with this scenario, I mean, it's basically the fence is halfway through their property line or the backyard.
I would like to state in previous corner discussions where he's talking about the setback for a new build being three times from the, from the curb versus where a fence is located and previously in the situation, Planning Commission said you take it on a case-by-case basis to be able to look at, you know, what's happening at that current property. So, on this case, it really just comes down to, because it's a cul-de-sac, the adjacent home does sit so far back to where if they put a fence and that meets code, it's essentially in the middle of the back of their house is where that return would be to go over. So, now he's just asking to project in front of the adjacent home into that side yard since he now meets how far he needs to be from the side property line.
I don't have any issues with it, I have a similar instance where my neighbor's fence extends past my, front of my house and I, I understand why it's there and I have no issues, so. Further discussion or does someone want to make a motion?
I'll try. I'd like to make a motion that we grant the exception for fence extending past the front of the adjacent house based on the revised proposal.
So, a second?
I'll second that.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you.
For clarity, that is subject to the staff, the recommendations in the report as well, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item of business is item B, site plan review for 6028 Catalina Senior, Fairway, Kansas, sorry, Catalina Street, Fairway, Kansas, as submitted by Joseph Elder of Elder Custom Homes on behalf of Nick and Alyssa, property owner, request for new single-family residence. Basel, will you please provide your report?
Again, I'll let my reports stand as submitted, staff does recommend approval for the job. And I'm open to questions.
Any questions for staff?
Maybe not a question, but just maybe we need, I don't know if we need to fix this in the notes or something, but it says the rear runoff is reduced from 0.07 cubic feet per second to 0.86, I think there's a typo.
Yeah, so it should be .97, but I don't know if we need to fix this staff report, we just need to note that in the minutes. Any other discussion?
It appears to meet the requirements, so I would support approving this.
Was that a motion?
I can make a motion unless anybody wants to have more comments.
No comments.
Go for it.
What's the address?
6028 Catalina.
I would make a motion that we approve the site plan for 6028 Catalina.
So, a second?
I second that.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, passes. Thank you. Next item is item C, site plan review for 5926 Windsor Drive, Fairway, Kansas, as submitted by Q. Dong Dang of Generators for Sale on behalf of Mary Champion, property owner, request exception for generator location and exception to green space. Basel, will you please provide your staff report?
I'll let my report stand as submitted with the correction of the applicant, it is correct on the agenda now on the report and staff does recommend approval of the request. They're seeking a request for the side installation of the generator and exception for the green space and staff does recommend waiving the watershed analysis.
Any questions for staff? So, we're discussing the 12 square feet, I believe, of green space over the limit?
That's correct.
Any discussion?
I'm not sure if this is a question for staff or the applicant, but is the selected generator listed and does it actually fit on a 12-square-foot pad?
Yes, it does, it's Generac generator.
Okay.
So, it's a standard size.
And then, I'm not sure what the requirements are with regard to noise on the side of the house like that, is, is that something you measure?
Typically, it's 75 decibel at the property line.
Okay.
To add equation to the 12 feet.
And you test, do you, do you measure that?
Yeah, we do test that when we do the final.
So, if they met the green space requirement, we wouldn't technically need to review this, you would just review it yourself?
You will still need to review installing it on the side.
Oh, we still see all generators?
Just on the side, right?
Yeah, on the side.
Oh, okay, I see, all right.
So, they have the distance more than 12 feet, but they still need the exception for installing it on the side.
Any discussion or questions?
I'd make a motion for the plan submitted for 5926 Windsor Drive, that we approve the exceptions for the generator location on the side of the house and the decrease in the green space by 12 square foot.
So, a second?
Second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, motion passes. Next item is item D, site plan review for 4500 Shawnee Mission Parkway, Fairway, Kansas, as submitted by William Barnier of Meredith Corporation, DBA KCTV5, request for alteration, modification to existing monument sign face. Basel, will you please provide your staff report?
Again, I'll let my report stand as submitted and staff recommends approval, it's just changing the face of the sign, not changing the size or location. I'm open to questions.
So, the frame of the sign is staying the same, they're just changing the face of it?
That's correct.
And they still have to have approval?
Per our zoning ordinance, yes.
Okay, just kind of understanding.
And then it will also go to council, so you're just making the recommendation, but any commercial signage does. That was something I learned.
(laughing). The new owner just got to have his name on the sign.
I don't have any issues with it.
Yeah, I, I would support this, yes.
I'd make a motion that we approve the request for 4500 Shawnee Mission Parkway to provide a new face for their sign, their existing monument sign.
So, a second?
Second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, motion passes. Next item of business is a public hearing for the special use permit for utility structures to be installed on site for Fairway Active Adult Apartments located at 4210 Shawnee Mission Parkway, as submitted by Henry Clover of Clover Architects on behalf of Fairway AALC property owners. Basel, will you please provide your staff report?
Yes, I'll, I'll let my report stand as submitted, basically, they're seeking a special use permit for six side locations for utility ever-G equipment. They addressed most of the items, as far as the report, we did not get any recommendation from applicant regarding the screening. As far as the noise, we just received a video for similar equipment as far as the noise and how loud it is and if you guys, we can play that video for you guys, hear that sound as far as the humming of the equipment. Staff is not opposed to the special use permit, we did put a limit of 30 years and the applicant sent us a letter, they're requesting the special use permit to be the duration of the building, the lifespan of the building.
So, I guess these weren't approved already in the original site plan?
Again, on the site plan, they showed the location of them, but they still need a special use permit for, for our zoning ordinance.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
So, in your opinion, have they located these so that they won't be disruptive to the apartments? I mean, those little, little plans and things that are on that, our review are, are so tiny, I couldn't, I couldn't even distinguish what size, I don't know if you?
Well, the size is all in the background, so I can give you the size.
Well, I know the sizes, but I mean, I really can't tell from, from the size of these plans where, where they really even?
The video maybe give you an indication how big the equipment is, so if you guys want to look at that, that's fine.
But I mean, it's, it's located far enough away from the units that it's not going to be come up. Okay, so?
I mean, I don't know if we could really decide that, right? Depends on the equipment. Depends on where the unit is in the floor plan.
Well, these are all outside the building, I mean. I don't know, probably we couldn't.
Is the applicant here? Would you state your name and address for the record and maybe you can answer Commissioner Denton's question?
Hi, my name is Eric Estwell with Clover Architects, 8813 Penrose Lane, Suite 400. So, if you could repeat your question?
Well, I was just concerned that they wouldn't be located right outside somebody's patio or right below a deck.
Well, due to the unique configuration of the overall site, we do have one on the north side of the property. It is somewhat close to a unit, but at the end of the day, we've got the spacious landscaping in the courtyard, it's not going to be well noticed. It'll be about six feet tall, but we've got some more landscaping out there, I don't think it's going to be an issue.
I guess when people are renting there, they'd be able to see if there was a transformer outside their door and maybe want to reconsider if they?
They'll know well ahead of time.
Maybe they get a discount.
Give what?
Maybe they get a discount.
Maybe so.
My, my question for the applicant is on, on 50th Street, it looks like there's some topography, it's a great change from the curb, it goes uphill, let's see, is, is how many of these locations are, are they going to have any sort of like simple improvements, like retaining walls and other things that will make these things look larger than they are, or what's your plan on handling that great adjustment?
So, the, the transformer up on the, the, we'll say the northwest end?
Yeah.
That one is relatively flat by the time the final grading is done?
Okay.
In that area, the sectional that's on the, so the northeast side or closer to Starbucks?
That one's pretty flat already.
That's a, one of the small?
Yep.
Small coffee types, so the grade change there won't?
With the transformer at the north, at the northwest location, there's, you guys have taken consideration of the grading plan, there's, there's no additional, on the transformer, there's no additional like site retaining walls or anything that you need to put into that level?
No, there might be a turn down on the, on the pad itself.
Right.
But other than that, we don't anticipate that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
Chair, if I may, if I may, do we open the public hearing officially?
Oh, good to call. Okay. This opens the public hearing for the special use permit for utility structures to be installed on site for Fairway Active Adult Apartments located at 4210 Shawnee Mission Parkway, as submitted by Henry Clover of Clover Architects on behalf of Fairway AALC property owners. Is there anyone present to speak on this? Is there anyone online? All right, this closes the public hearing. Any discussion?
Not for me.
Someone be interested in making a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the submitted information for 4210 Shawnee Mission Parkway for the Fairway Mixed Use District and to approve the sizes of the transformers and the locations. Is there other stuff I need to say?
We just need to address the specific duration because staff are recommending 30 years consistent with prior Planning Commission recommendations and the applicant is requesting the life of the building, so we'll want you to make a recommendation, include a recommendation.
Could we maybe discuss that real quick then?
Yeah.
It's too late, I'm already in the motion.
Pause. I mean, I guess my thought would be, I would want that equipment there for the building, so if the building is still active, I think the duration of the building would make sense.
Was there a reason behind the 30-foot limit, I mean, the 30-year limit?
I put that in place on there as it states from? As it states, other utility structure special use permits have been the 30-year and my understanding in the code, it can't be listed as an unlimited, that it did have to have a time period tied to it, which the life of the building is a question.
So, we can't even do the life of the building?
Be difficult, do we have a time period of the building?
(laughing).
30 years might be longer than it lasts.
The thing about special use permits is that they are, they typically are time limited because it's a unique use and whatever zoning district is involved and so it's to accommodate, you're, you're getting special permission to be able to do whatever the request is, so it's, it's, they're intended to be reviewed.
Yeah, won't, won't they just come back in 29 years and six months and ask for an extension? All right. I would go with the staff's recommendation of 30 years for the length of the life.
Was that all we need to include in the motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Next item of business is item F, annual review of Planning Commission bylaws. Did we have something in our packet for that?
Bylaws, right there.
Yeah.
I don't think I?
Did you get something?
I got the, well, I saw the line, I didn't look at the, I didn't see the hard copy this week.
I didn't look up?
I didn't, I didn't see it in mine.
We were looking at the bylaws last month, I don't even recall why, but it, it came to my attention that there's a statement in there about reviewing them every year and so that's why we're, we're bringing this forward, I mean, it's not an urgent item since we did just do a pretty significant overhaul last year, so we could just continue this for the next agenda, if that's okay with the Commission.
Yeah, that'd be good, because I don't, I forgot to check online, so I didn't look at the inside, my packet.
When was the last time they wrote this?
I don't remember the exact date, it was like it wasn't that long ago.
It was not, because it was completed prior to previously Clark Kim Young's retirement, I know it was one of the last things, so I believe it was last summer.
I think so.
In September or October, I believe, is when they were finally adopted, I don't have a date on this one, but I know?
But it wasn't a full review, was it?
Yes, it was.
Okay, maybe you did a full review?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, and the point of this too is if you see anything that you want to change, you can certainly make some recommendations or suggestions about any changes or anything you want to see addressed, this, we can even take that out, single review requirement, because there is a provision in the bylaws for how it amended, so it's not necessary to review every year, it's not a legal requirement. not a legal requirement, which is something I'd say.
Okay. Is there a motion to table this to the next meeting?
I'd make a motion to table the review of the Fairway Planning Commission bylaws until our next scheduled meeting in August.
Second that.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item of business, item four, additional business, the next meeting date is August twenty-sixth. Do we have applications?
We have five applications, five new houses.
We're getting busy again. Okay, last item of business is a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Didn't want to take it.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.